Welcome everyone to our Focus Forum today. We're thrilled to have you here. Uh, we're all filtering in. We had a very nice uh set of registration number of registered for this. I think you're gonna find this very interesting. I know I'm looking forward to hearing from some of our newer common counselors. Um, so I hope you're enjoying uh today of this sort of spring weather and looking forward to the weekend. Um, we're just closing in on it. I think we're pretty much filtered in now. So. Again, welcome everybody uh to our Focus Forum. I'm Rita Riker, uh President of Focus at Greater Syracuse. And uh once again delighted to see you all here um or at least have you all here. Um, in January, we held a forum asking people what they would like to hear about during um during our forums. And one of the things that was mentioned was getting to know some of the newer elected officials. Um, and uh so uh here we are. We started with our newest uh Syracuse Common Counselors. Um, Martin Ave, uh Patrona Jones-Rouser and uh Corey Williams. And we're delighted that they accepted our invitation and want to talk a little bit about why they run and why they ran and uh why um. Uh, what, what some of their priorities are. So let's start off. I'm gonna do this alphabetically. Martin, do you want to give us a little introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you ran?
Yes, so I born and raised on the north side of Syracuse. And in nineteen ninety-nine, the Dale Street Neighborhood Watch Group was founded. And then two thousand one, I took over so would not be shut down. So I got really involved in my community. Uh, listening to a lot of their concerns. We brought in a lot of elected officials uh. From the mayor, county executive, district attorney. Uh, my motto has always been bring government closer to the people. So I've been very much engaged in my community, helping them with a lot of their issues, whether it had to do with issues in their homes, their apartments, potholes, missing signs, speeding vehicles. So I work closely uh with the police department, the fire department, uh government agencies to help our constituents. And we still meet by monthly at the Sunday church. So. Uh, about two years ago, the council districts were rearranged and by rearranging it, they eliminated Sedgewick. They added the North Street Prospect Hill corridors. Which I first lived at, they added the other portions of the north side going south from Court Street, Grand Boulevard, uh which was in the second council district. And so it brought the north side together. So this was my opportunity to run for office. I've helped so many candidates over the years. And it was my first chance to run for public office. And running for public office was not easy. It was very hard. Uh, but I did prevail in a primary and in the general election. Um, as I said, I was born and raised on the north side, attended local schools. Uh Franklin Webster Schools. I attended Grant Junior High School where I was on a student council for three years. Bred from Hattler in nineteen seventy-two. Again, I serve on the council there. And then I'm an Anadagga Community College graduate and I serve on the students. I serve on the student senate as well. So I've been gauging my community. Uh, what are the concerns that takes up a lot of my time? The complaints are of issues of drugs, smoke shops that sell drugs or tobacco. Uh, we have a lot of trash in our community. We have a lot of abandoned houses. Uh, I spent a lot of my time sending letters to these out of state, out of area landlords. That your house is not livable, that you have so much trash, we're requesting it. Uh, that it be cleaned up. Uh, last week, uh, there was a drug and zombie house. It was brought to my attention. I had sent a letter out to the landlord on Butternut Street who lives out of the area. And then last Friday, the police came in and they had a fatal overdose. And of this, um, so we got, we got codes involved. Uh, they had to board it up. Then I had to call codes again because uh people were crashing in calling squatters. And where they're doing a lot of the drugs. So it's a never ending uh issue. This past week and a half, I have been consumed with the tragic death of an eleven-year-old boy on East Division Street. Um, I have talked to neighbors about this situation. I was aware of this for over a year. Uh, one gentleman who lives next door came to my meetings, told me about the situation. Told me of all the numerous calls he had made to agencies about this situation. He came to me last Thursday, telling me uh the boy had died. And from that point on, I've been just consumed with local media requests and wanting to talking about this. So all the issues that we're having on the north side, I continue to hear all the negative feedback about this and I'm defending my area. It's a good area. And you know what we did this week? An illegal smoke shop opened up on Grand Boulevard, running permits. I spent the whole week trying to get it shutting down, get it shut down, which meant I had to work with city officials, the code department, the law department, talking with the mayor. And yes, I do get impatient as a counselor, but we got it done. You know, so many illegal businesses trying to get on the north side. There are a lot of negative views that go on the north side, but I continued to fight my, fight for my constituents, fight for my district. It's not easy. It's hard, but I'm up to the challenge. I do the seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. In fact, I was up late last night with Syracuse Police about a uh eighteen-wheeler that was parked on Butter and Brookshire Ave. So I spoke with search police on that matter. But because constituents call me, I answer their calls. I do the very best I can. I know my area. And constituent service is is number one with my constituents. You answer the calls and you take, you take some hits. But that's my job and I'm up to the challenge. And I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Rita. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Thank you very much. Um, Patrona, you're up next. Tell us a little bit about why you chose to run and uh some of your priorities. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Rita and the Focus staff for um having me and allowing me to um give some feedback to many other communities' concerns. Uh, I am Patrona Jones-Rouser. I am a lifelong resident of Syracuse. Um, I moved away for a very short time when I was a, a very young person. I lived in New Jersey for a couple of years, very short, and returned um during my elementary years. Um, so I've been here my entire life and um why I ran um was because um growing up in the city, I, I'm, I'm a resident of the south side. I represent the south side as a counselor. And seeing the changes that took place from when I was um younger to today um or even ten years ago, it was very drastic for my neighborhood and for my community residents. Um, I'm a hairstylist by trade and a lot of my clients always would be complaining about, you know, the neighborhood and how the large amount of disinvestment and, and uh in many areas, I should say. So we have uh disinvestment in, in uh economic development, disinvestment in properties, disinvestment in um schools and disinvestment in activities such as community centers and parks. A lot of the um, the things that was available when I was a child in parks and recreation centers and things of that nature. Um, a lot of those programming options for youth were no longer available. And for people in my community who have, may have children and work overlaps them getting out of um school. The school, the um, the Parks and Rec or the centers programs were a, a need in my community. And so all of those things combined was the reason why I um got involved in, in um trying to see where I could help my community. So in, in two thousand eight, I um got involved with, you know, some community organizations, Tomorrow's Neighborhoods Today being one. And trying to figure out where I could advocate for my community because a lot of my community, when I'm talking with them and saying, well, this is what you can do, you know, you can reach out to these individuals, this person and a lot of them for some reason feel like it, it doesn't matter. They're not going to be heard. And so for that to be a constant thing that's said, it's like, okay. Over time, black voices have been dismissed. And so will I then be also the one to say, well, if you're not going to help yourself, you know, I, I don't have the time to help you. No. So I stepped up and I stayed in it. So from, like I said, two thousand eight, I've been involved in the community and I've, I've done, you know, what I can to assist where I can. And I guess the running for council was just the next level to that. Um, and so my, my, some of my greatest concerns at this point in time, because I've been involved for so long that things change, you know, yearly or so. And so um in the last few years, the mental health um issues throughout the community are increasingly scary. Um, so that's something that is one of my top priorities. Uh, the housing issues, is issues with housing as far as um the affordability rate as well as the quality in housing. Um, so improving housing stock is, is one of my main things, which I've, I've worked with. Um, the administration and, and dealt with them on the R and I program and, and gave, gave um feedback as to what um not just my community, but you know, throughout the city uh needs. And um it's, I'm sure other counselors have as well, but the housing is one of the top concerns. Um, for my district, um, I'll say that the economic development is a key component for our district to, to pick back up and remain, you know, sustainable once we get it to that point. Um, so the disinvestment throughout the community over the, over the, the last few decades has really been a issue for, for my community on the south side. And so for that to happen um for the economic development piece to take place uh would be, would be a key component, which we do have some development that'll be happening along the south side, the South Ave um corridor through um the DRI um initiatives through the city, the downtown initiative. Um, that will go from the Anadaga and Salina throughout the South Ave to Valley Drive Sector of the, of the uh south side. So that will be a, a huge improvement for our, our uh area. Um, we would like to see more improvements along the South Salina Street Business Corridor. Um, as that is our neighbor to the Syracuse University, um to the outer Comstock area, to the Brighton, the Upper Brighton neighborhood. Um, so that, that way we can have a greater um relationship with our neighbors to the north. Um, and, and that will bring, you know, a little bit more investment to our neighborhoods. So.
Very good. Thank you, Patrona. Very, very informative. Uh, next up, Corey. Uh, Corey, you probably know the drill by now, so go for it.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to, to speak to your group today. Um, hi, everyone. Corey Williams. I, unlike my two fellow panelists, I am not a city or a lifelong city resident. Um, I actually grew up in the suburbs to the west side. I went to Westell High School. That being said, I am from a Syracuse family. Um, my mother's side settled around Skidney Park in nineteen oh three. Um, and my father's side was on Toppil in the eighteen seventies. And um although I was born in the suburbs, I moved to the university neighborhood eighteen years ago, I think. Um, I'm really terrible with years and times and dates. And so I, I believe that um eighteen is the actual number. And I've been in my home on Buckingham Avenue for the past sixteen years. In terms of what made me want to run, um similar to Marty, there was a technical component with the redistricting. Um, where I live in the sixteenth ward, if you walk um a little bit to the south, you end up in the old third. Um, I was in the old fourth. And if you went just east of where I live, you ended up in the old fifth. And so on a bike ride or a walk with the dog, um, I used to walk through three council districts pretty routinely. When they redrew them, the east side ended up a much more cohesive entity in terms of the council. And, you know, I thought that that gave me a really good opportunity to represent the neighborhood that I actually live in. Um, from a kind of more aspirational standpoint in terms of, you know, motivations for running. I've worked with the Syracuse City School District for the past nine years. Um, and through this work, I've seen, you know, both the potential and challenges of, of everyone that lives in the city. Um, you know, some things that came to mind and things that I want to see addressed. The fact that our the number of homeless students we have has doubled since the pandemic. Um, we used to sit around a thousand kids that were qualifying for McInnes-Vento Services. At the end of last year, we were over two thousand. Current year, we just passed eighteen hundred. And, you know, I think that what we see in the schools is a microcosm of what's happening with individuals citywide. Um, and for folks that don't have school-aged children. You know, overall, I think that um my experiences with the district kind of coupled with the kind of point in time that we are living through, um, you know, some refer to it as the micron moment. Um, and then we have a you know, once in a generation, really once in a lifetime opportunity with the um, the viaduct coming down. And, you know, I think that everyone on the call can recognize the fact that the city that we live in now is going to look different in five years and in ten years. And I want to be, you know, advocating for folks who currently live in the city um to make sure that we see benefits from both of these projects. Um, and you know, one thing that I, I like to point out is that I have um two electoral districts of the old fifteenth ward within of the new, the new third council district. Um, I think that, you know, paying attention to those folks that were displaced by urban renewal, as they termed it, um back in the forties and fifties. Um, you know, those folks that were affected by, by the eighty-one project at that point, um, many of them are seeing family members displaced for a second time. Um, I think that, you know, I, I wanna bring a lens of equity to everything that I do. And uh, like I said, make sure that we harness the opportunity that we have to make sure that we benefit folks that are already in the city. In terms of my priorities, um, I already mentioned housing is one of them. I think that we need to have safe and affordable housing. Um, you know, housing is a human right. I think that we need to internalize that as we move forward with our legislative agenda. And something that I'm just gonna throw into the conversation, um, I would like to, to lift up the concept of sustainability within the city. Um, there has not been a lot of dialogue around sustainability, um, but I think that the the winter or lack of winter that we're living through, um, right on the heels of one of the hottest summers that we've ever lived through, um, shows us that our environment is changing. Um, and I think that we need to start talking about and thinking about mitigation and response to the new climate that we exist in. And, you know, of course, I think that representing my constituents and addressing their needs as Ms. Jones-Rouser and, and Mr. Nave had mentioned, um, I think that that's a really important thing of a district counselor um to make sure that folks that live within your district um have representation. Um, you know, are able to get connected to the appropriate services and have a voice in the city hall.
Great. Thank you, Corey. Appreciate it. Let me get everybody spotlighted here and um I'm going to uh hit a spotlight. And we're gonna bring Brian in, Brian Hoak, a board, former board member, and uh to lead our Q and A. We were lucky enough that some people have um one person can't do two things at the same time. There we go. Um, we were, we were fortunate enough that some people have submitted um some questions uh prior when, during the registration process. And I do notice that there are some questions and comments in the chat as well. So um, Brian, take it away.
Thanks, Rita. And thanks to the panelists and everybody attending for being here. Good afternoon to you all. Many of the questions we received in advance were about your, your origin stories, right? Why, why did you decide to run? And you all touched on that in your opening remarks. So I'll, I'll change that slightly to reflect some of the questions we received. What in your background made you think you'd be a good candidate? What experiences did you have or interest or skills? What made you think, yeah, not only do I want to do this, obviously you all do. Uh, you were elected, so voters thought you should do it. But what made you think, yeah, I could be good at this and I have something to, to bring to the party? Anybody wanna go first?
I'll, I'll, I'll be the first to go. So I have no experience in what I would say, politics. Um, I currently do not even like to be addressed as a politician. Um, and I say that because it, it, it does carry a negative undertone. Um, when people think of politicians, they, they think that um people have, who have promised them multiple things and probably have come through on very minimum amount of those things. Um, and so I, I, I prefer to just be called Patrona Jones-Rouser. But um, but other than the fact that um I have had relationships with um many of the city officials, some, some officials in Albany um and relationships with other cities like Rochester, Buffalo, um individuals within some of these cities that I know that I would be able to go to, um, if I need answers or if I need updates, um things of that nature, uh just being able to consume the information that I need to bring it back to uh my constituents. I know that that is the strength that I have. Um, I'm going to read as much as possible to get the information that I need to get. So just, just really keeping myself updated on what's going on, how's it gonna change? How will it affect the people who I represent? That is one of the strong, the, the, the strengths that I have. Um, and so that was really one of the things that propelled me not only and, and probably allowed the residents to push me um to run, because it was a lot of the, a lot of the residents, like, you really should run. You really should run. And I'm like, yeah, that's, that's not my thing. Like, I felt comfortable where I was. Um, and I've said it before, I'll just say that I only ran because the seat was becoming available. If, if Mrs. Latoya was to remain in that seat, I would have remained in the seat that I was in. Um, so I, like I said, I don't, I didn't have any real political aspirations. Um, but it just fell into play.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I'll, I promise not to call you Madam Counselor, but rather Patrona. Gentlemen, either of you like to, to weigh in?
Yep, I guess I'll hop in if you don't mind, Marty.
No, no, go ahead.
All right. Um, I think first and foremost, what, you know, makes me a good counselor is the fact that I have a love of our city. Um, I moved here, you know, from the suburbs and at that point, I don't think that I had any intention to, to stay. Um, I'd been living in New England prior to this. Um, splitting town between New Hampshire and then Colorado in the winter. And I expected to come to school and then move back to, you know, somewhere else. And I came back home, um, you know, reconnected with friends and family and wound up finding community here on the east side. Um, you know, I'm a huge cheerleader for the city and I, I really wanna see it move forward. In terms of, you know, my, my other qualifications per se, I did go to the Maxwell School and got an MPA. And so, you know, if, if it's a thing, um, I have an education in training and governance. Um, and additionally, I completed a PhD at ESM. And I bring this up, um, you know, none of the, the content or the topics of what I did have any relevance to my role as the counselor. Um, but what it did is it trained me to think analytically. Um, you know, it also showed me that I am not the expert in any topic, but there are experts out there. And that, you know, if you have the, you know, the time and the will, you can find information on whatever it is. And so I think that, you know, one of my ideas is to figure out solutions that have been attempted in other cities, other municipalities throughout the country. Um, you know, because of many urban areas share similar challenges, um, figure out what has been done at their places and adapt it, um, make it specific to our city here and um, you know, hopefully move forward for, you know, for the betterment of our community. Um, last thing is that, as I mentioned earlier, I do work for the city schools, which means that on any given day, I might be visiting any of our thirty-four buildings in every single neighborhood of the city. And so I have a familiarity with all the different neighborhoods and some of the nuance depending on, on where in the city you are.
Cool. Great. Thank you, Corey.
Of course.
Marty?
Yes, so our family immigrated from Italy over one hundred twenty years ago and it was my great-grandfather. And he lived at five thirteen North State Street. That's where our family lived, four, five hundred block of North State Street. And which is now, because of redistricting, part of my council district. And I have a lot of memories. I mean, I have a former county executive, Nick Peral, who is one of my constituents. Uh, I have been involved in politics for a long time. I came from a predominantly Republican family. When I was in high school, I registered as a Democrat and that's another story. And I joined Anadagga County Democratic Committee in two thousand eight, although I was very involved in Democratic Committee since the early seventies. I took a lot of interest in local government. In fact, I was going through one of our uh uh common council in review books. And I went to the year nineteen seventy-two and there was my name that I had spoke on the, at the common council, it was December nineteen seventy-two, and the issue was the consumer coal protection. And uh so, you know, when you go to council, it means everything is detailed, the speakers are, well, there was my name. And there was nineteen seventy-two, and there's my name, one of the speakers.
Very cool.
And I showed that one of my colleagues, I say, see this, how involved I've been, I've been. A reporter asked me, referred me as new to politics. I says, no, I'm not new. I've engaged in my, I've been chair of my ward for ten years, over uh, yeah, ten years and, but it's always to engage in my community. Well, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to run, and some people wanted me to run for other offices, was that as a child, uh, I noticed something different. I was, I was twitching. I had these vocal tickets, these tics. I had struggles in learning. And it wasn't until many years later that I was diagnosed with Tourette's Syndrome, a neurological disorder. It was then years later that I realized my difficulties in schools, figuring out arithmetic, maybe having a little attention deficit disorder, trying to be a little organized, uh panic attacks. Uh, yeah, that, that was me. That was me. And, and it still is me. So I do have these issues. But I wanna show the people, whether you have Tourette's Syndrome or any other misunderstood disorder or anxieties. Uh, that you know what, your life is valuable. And we gotta break down these, these barriers of prejudice of all kinds. Of misunderstandings. We are quick to assume a person uh, is nervous or he has this disorder. Or he has mental issues. And I was labeled with all of that. And so all that I point out to people that, you know, you can do anything in your life. And I will tell this to a child, I tell this to parents. When they see their children uh, being diagnosed with Tourette's Syndrome, one of the first thing is they have angst, they, they start crying. They fear for the child's life. They fear, what type of life will this child have? Will that child be able to drive a vehicle, get married, uh, have good uh, relations with people? Will he get into trouble? Will he get arrested because he'll be misunderstood? And they don't, uh, they don't know why the person tics. Or for whatever reason, misunderstanding. And we try to break down these barriers and I'm doing that right now. As a, as I serve a counselor, yeah, I have my issues and I have to listen very carefully. And I may not understand something, so I ask counselor, you know, uh, for advice. Uh, who should I see? Uh, someone got a few parking tickets. Who's the best person? You know, I, and I get advice through there. So I, I work through these things. And uh, sometimes I'll be in a setting and people will stare at me. Uh, why are your eyes blink this and that? And just to prove that regardless of what, any seen or unseen or known or unknown disability a person has, you know what? You can do what you can. You can reach to the stars. You can run and you can be elected to public office. I've done it and I hope it will be an inspiration to other people as well.
Great. Well, thanks Marty. Thanks to all of you. Those, that was interesting to hear your, uh, your background in, in coming to where you are now. Let's switch to, to housing. Uh, we had a few questions sent in in advance about the lack of affordability, availability of safe, decent housing in the city. Curious, what are the issues in your district specifically and in the city as a whole? What can you or the council do about it? Or what are you doing about it? And your thoughts on the matter, please? Any, uh, any order? Whoever would like to go first?
Well, I will say this, uh, when it comes to housing, we have so much boarded up housing. We have abandoned housing. The land bank has, has put up for sale so much here on the north side. Uh, the houses we have are 100, 130, 150 years old or more. Many of these houses are, have not been updated. They have uh, plumbing, uh, there are plumbing issues, electrical issues. There is lead, there is mold. There are a lot of issues that we have. Uh, we have our share of landlords, we have good landlords and, but we have a share of landlords who do not care. They don't live in the area, they're out of state. And as a council, we have sent out so many letters to these uh, out of state landlords uh, to fix your property. And we, and one of the reasons we're having right now is that people are living in slum conditions right now. Uh, the houses are not being take, being taken care of. They're not up to date. And right now there's housing that is put up for sale. Again, it's not being updated. Unfortunately, there's a lot of prejudices that's going on right now. We are, we are home to many people, many communities, people from many nations who speak many languages. And when they go into a home, uh, it's the best that they have that they can afford and go into. And there are housing issues. There's lead paint. Uh, there's mold, as I've said, electrical plumbing, heating issues that are not being taken care of. Why? Well, because many landlords were out of state, out of, they really don't care. And then that's a, a battle that we have. And I speak to many of our new Americans and many, a young lady told me from Somalia, she told me that I cannot wait to get out of an apartment and own our own home. Well, we want you to own our, your own home and we wanted to do it on the north side. We still have very fine homes that are well taken care of in many good parts of our neighborhood. It's even on my street where I live. We have some homes for sale right now. They're very fine homes. So, but still, uh, we still have a housing crisis. You know, we have boarded up houses that need to be torn down. We need new houses. We need to be, uh, to be built. Uh, everybody talks about the suburbs, but please do not forget our cities. Please do not forget our neighborhoods. We need new housing and I will continue to be an advocate for that.
Great. Thank you. Want to go in reverse order? Cory, can we go to you next? Patrona, if that's all right with you?
Sure. Um, so when we talk about housing as it relates to the third district in particular, um, we kind of find ourselves in an interesting situation over here. If you look at the housing study from CZB, you'll find that um, the majority of the east side district that I represent, um, the housing stock is actually in really good condition. And so.
Cory, I'm sorry, the, the uh, study you referenced was from, I just didn't catch that.
CZB, they are our housing consultant.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yep, and they, they've done phase one, um, phase two is coming out pretty soon. Um, and so interestingly, a lot of what I hear from folks in the neighborhood is about the cost of housing. Um, and you know, how much it's increased in, in this area and families are you know, being forced to, to move to other parts of the city. Um, you know, one of the other challenges that we have around the university is balancing the issue of resident homeowners and, and students around the university. Um, you know, similarly, what we've seen over time is that the kind of the radius of student housing has gone further and further out into the neighborhood. Um, and so that's dynamic that is, you know, really interesting to manage. Um, you know, provides a lot of character to our neighborhood. Um, but you know, we, we often deal with that conflict um, between our landlords and our students and our residents that live here. Um, I think, you know, when I, when I think about housing as an issue in particular, I don't always think about neighbor, about my neighborhoods and about my council districts. Um, you know, I tend to think about other parts of the city. And you know, I will say that I am not an expert in housing policy. Um, I am regularly in touch with the folks at CMY Fair Housing, um, because they know a whole lot more about the complexities of how, housing policy than I do. Um, what I can say is that I, you know, see the need for more housing, safe housing, affordable housing. Um, and that's one of the lenses through which I I, you know, I view all of our, our actions on the council is to make sure that we can provide more housing for folks, um, affordable housing and safe housing.
Right. Thanks Cory. Patrona?
Yes. So um, I've already touched on some of the, the um, housing discussed as far as like the um, the RNI program through the mayor's initiative. Um, and that initiative um, will bring about just under, I believe, 300 units just in RNI. Um, for um, majority of the south and southwest and west side area. When those discussions were happening, it was very important, you know, to understand that individuals' needs for affordable housing, quality housing. But not only that, one of the key components, if anyone has followed me, um, they would know that my push was also for um, home ownership opportunities for individuals. Because a lot of people, like I said, I spoke with a lot of people throughout the years and many individuals wish to buy homes, but they don't want to buy homes that they then have to put another hundred thousand dollars into. So having that component of um, newly uh, developed housing for ownership was key. Um, so those, those plans are in the works, we're in, and they're moving forward. The um, they're currently building homes for um, new, newer uh, affordable housing units as well. There are a few that have already um, been developed, some rehabilitations. Um, and then we'll start seeing more, more units de- um, develop. A lot of it is primarily affordable housing um, through Lytech uh, tax um, credits. So one of the, and I want to speak, I'm not a planner, but I've, I've been in these rooms long enough to be able to dissect things in a planner's aspect. One thing that we, we have to look at in my district, but I know it's throughout the entire city, um, is that we gotta, we have to look at the entire ecosystem when we're doing these, these, these individual items. So for my area, outside of the um, South Valley, North Valley, South Side, uh, Southwest Side and other sides of the city that I don't represent, but I do represent them as a counselor. Um, that, I'm not their, I'm not their counselor, their district counselor, but I still represent the city. As far as I was saying, is like the economic development of one of our major corridors. That's key for our area when you talk about housing because no one wants to build houses in an area that doesn't bring the return that they're looking for. So um, unfortunately, a lot of the housing in our area is, is unfortunate to me, it might be fortunate to others. But a lot of the housing in our area will land under the Lytech um, housing initiatives. And that's majority lower income housing uh, credits because um, again, there's no economic development in that area. We're talking about areas of majority marginalized residents. And so if and I'm just going to be honest and frank, if people look at individuals in my community as not being able to afford things, then the development aspect is not there. So again, bringing it back to the ecosystem, when you are building all Lytech housing in a clustered area, you're still centralizing poverty. So the city also needs to take heed to that and, and look at the greater plan throughout the city, even rezone. Rezone, you know, has, has already happened. There can be some changes. Um, but that in itself also structured it in a way where this development um, density in certain areas are larger, but those are still some of the areas that suffer from poverty. So you're still clustering those individuals on top of each other. Again, the ecosystem is what's important, not just the housing, the economic development, um, the, which, which people are looking at, transportation. How does one thing affect all of these areas? So it's more than just, it's more than just housing. But again, I am, I'm 100% on board with all development of housing. I, I have um, as far as helping people to um, repair their homes. I've, I've written grants for um, the 1% home improvement loan that I've been awarded for the last three years through UnSAC funding and that is to help homeowners who do not normally qualify for grants um, and loans that they would probably be priced out of because they may make too much. Now, this is an opportunity for them to be able to um, get funding to fix up their properties and this is all exterior. Um, exterior work to be done. Um, so that is one way that I've been able to help my neighbors um, and to, to to improve my community. Um, I've been on other as, well, I sit on boards that do, that deal with housing, home headquarters. Um, I am, I am a and deciding, deciding member for home headquarters. I'm on the board of Housing Vision. I was on the board of Syracuse Modern Neighborhood. So I am at the table for many of the housing entities and to make sure that, you know, that things are moving in a way that improves um, the lives of, of individuals.
Thank you. That's fascinating.
Patrona, I think you should know that you're, you're the housing committee for the council.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry. So I am the chair of Neighborhood Preservation, which, which deals primarily with um, mass, the, the mass of, of housing um, issues.
And in my uninformed opinion, appropriately so, given your background. Cool. Thank you all for those uh, remarks. We don't have long and apologies to the questions we can't get to, either those sent in in advance or those folks are, are listening now. But sort of in closing, uh, if there were a magic wand bestowed upon each of you that you could wave, either for your specific district uh, uh, in particular, or for the city as a whole. Is there one or perhaps just a few rights, uh, wrongs you would write, or problems you would solve, or things you would make better? Just curious what, you know, money's no object, there's no political uh, challenge to make this happen. What would you do? It can be small or it can be big. Just uh, curious uh, uh, what you might say. Marty, why don't we uh, start with you if we may?
Sure. Well, being involved with Neighborhood Watch and TNT, I look at past proposals that never happened on Butternut Street Quarter. I look at all these proposals. Butternut Street Quarter, the old Butternut Circle, North Solana Street, that never happened. I wish we could maybe engage more and how to make it better. I would like to see more transportation. More transportation. I say that because um, people go to Northeast Community Center on Holly Ave, hit the gate, the bus, get off, now Bernard Ave or James Street. It doesn't go there anymore. Um, what I would, would like to see is less crime because what we want to do together as a community and we engage, how we want to improve our neighborhood. The little things, have a farmer's market, more trash receptibles. Uh, we want more green space. We want people to engage more in our community. You know, we want more lights, we want more stop signs, uh, speed traps. I'm saying what constituents say to me. I wish I had a wa- uh, the biggest thing I wish we could do away with was crime. That is our biggest obstacle, crime. Because if people are not safe, do not feel safe, you can build all the nicest homes and businesses all you want. But when people live in fear, they fear to go to Rite Aid and, you know, Rite Aid is threatening to shut it down. I've been in pharmacy retail over 40 years. It's fear. It's fear. People tell me they are afraid to go out. They're afraid to go out uh, to walk the dog. This in the neighborhoods. Uh, till we can get a stronger control, controlling crime and not making people as fearful as they are today. That is what I really wish for.
Got it. All right. Thank you Marty. Cory, can we go to you next, sir?
Sure. Um, interestingly, you said, you know, if we could wave a magic wand and have money not be an option. Um, I feel like the trajectory of my term on the council changed drastically when I became chair of the finance committee. Um, and so money is, you know, very much at the forefront of my mind as I think about our city. And the fact that we have a $30 million structural deficit, meaning that the gap between what we spend and what we take in taxes. Um, you know, we need to make up $30 million every single year. And so, um, you know, I think that the you know, financial responsibility and, and being able to close that, that gap is really, really important to me. So if I could wave, wave the magic wand, I would, I would bring more money in. Um, but in terms of something a little bit more, more lofty, uh, following up with Marty and in my experience with the city schools, um, I want our youth to be able to grow up in a city where they feel safe and secure. Um, and I want our youth to be able to, to dream big, um, to have, you know, high hopes and aspirations and have, um, you know, both the education and the resources available to them to, you know, to do whatever they want with their lives.
Great. Thank you. Patrona, the last word to you ma'am, if, if you, if you would?
Yeah, so if I, I had a magic wand or a pot of money sitting somewhere, I would. Yeah, so if I I had a magic wand or a pot of money sitting somewhere, I would, I would want. That to be invested in education. Um. If you've seen the statistics for reading throughout the country, not a, not let alone Syracuse. But Syracuse is within the top two, um, with the worst um, reading uh levels. Um, so if you can't read, you're not comprehending well, and um. By the time you're in fifth grade, so if by third grade you're not on level, by the time you're in fifth grade. You're basically so far behind that there's no outcome for you to catch up by the time you're in high school. Um. So, invest in in education in other, other ways. It it may not be. Through the school systems. It could possibly be through um, those like I spoke about earlier, through um. Youth centers, through parks and recreation, um. Through creating some type of education forum for you, um, outside of the city school district, if if that's a need. But I think that um, our, our, our children and some adults. Have long been lost in the education system, that they're not getting what they need to be able to advocate for themselves. Um. That education is the key to success as long as you have it, but you also have to be able to use it. Um, so I think that that's where I would, I would like to see greatly improved.
Great. Well, thank you all. I think your constituents are lucky to have you. But Rita, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you, Cory, Petrona, Marty. This has really been eye opening and what. You all clearly care for this city and you're willing to to get your hands dirty and and help. So it's just very impressive. As a city resident, I know we're all in good hands. So thank you so much for your participation today.
I appreciate it.
Sure. Um, so we, this, uh, for those of you who in our audience, if you know of others who would like to. Uh, see this, view this, uh, it will be on our website probably by middle of next week. Um, so feel free to send folks to our website, uh, focus Syracuse dot com. Dot org, excuse me, focus Syracuse dot yeah, org. And um, and you'll be able to see it. There's also an easy way to donate. To focus um, on that website. So if you are so inclined, we would be very gr- grateful for that as well. Other than that, have a wonderful weekend. Thank you again and um, look forward to, oh, I will say that we are probably going to be. We're going to be trying to do the similar thing with some of the new uh, uh, Anadaga County legislators. A little bit later in the year. So look for that as well. Thanks again, and have a great day.